Come on.
Gotcha.
Leslie, we get to see your face today?
Yes, I now have video.
Oh, nice.
But for some reason, my sound's not working, so I'll have to work on that later.
Well, is, let's see, who are we, are we waiting for? Let's see, Ashley's on, there we go.
I think we're good.
Yeah.
Great. Um, with that, why don't we, uh, why don't we start the meeting? Let me just pull up, uh, so, uh, Leslie, do you, let's see, any, um, it's called order and roll call, Leslie?
Linda Calafiore.
Present.
Donna Jett.
Present.
Ellen Martin.
Present.
Judy Rofuero.
Here.
John Mysick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you very much.
Great. Um, any public appearances, uh, for anything not on the agenda? See, get my view going, see if there's anybody I'm missing. I don't see anybody, so, um, let's move on. Uh, next, let's go to announcements from commissioners.
Um, I guess I have one. The Women's Club did a lunch yesterday, sold out a hundred and twenty tickets. And Carmel Cares has a group of volunteers that are helping us to set up tables and chairs. We used to have high school students do it for credit, but Carmel Cares came, set up, helped us set up tables and chairs and helped us break down, so, big thank you. When Dale asks what you need, I tell him what I needed and came through. So, I have more on the list for them, but and shares. Thank you, Dale.
Nice work, Dale.
I'm sorry, I was, uh, I had my sound off, I was in a call. Um, we, we really enjoyed doing that, and I just picked up a couple more volunteers that are gonna help that live close by. You were talking about the events yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that was a lot of fun, and it was nice having your people join in with us yesterday.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, the Carmel Youth Center had a friends and family meal on Saturday evening that I know, I, I know Dale was there and, um, it was a full house of about ninety people, and really it was, it was a neat way to gather folks that have supported the youth center over the years. We had people that have attended it, you know, fifty years ago, and, uh, we also kind of laid out the vision for the next seventy-five years as we're approaching our seventh anniversary, so I thought it was a really neat community gathering and, um, looking forward to, uh, to the vision and executing on that, but, uh, a lot of, a lot of special people in that room and a lot of cool stories about the history of the youth center.
Oh, I, I have one more. Uh, the Lions Club had an event Friday night, and, um, there were lions from all over the area, Hollister and from further away, and, uh, talked about their history, which I knew nothing. And it was, um, very enlightening of what the lions have done and also continue to do in the area and all over the world, so, um, I was happy to attend that, so it was nice. So, now I have new knowledge of the lions.
It's a great, great organization. All right, um, with that, uh, we need to move to approve the minutes for two months because we didn't have a quorum last session, so approve the minutes for September thirteenth, I think we'll start there, uh, twenty twenty-two, and then we can go to October eleventh. So I'm guessing we need to do that separately.
I'll approve the meeting, uh, minutes for September.
I'll second.
Okay.
Linda Calafiore.
I wasn't there, so do I need to abstain, or do I say yes?
Just abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I was on the road in Utah, but I, I vote yes.
Okay. Uh, so Donna Jett is yes, Ellen Martin?
Yes.
Judy Rofuero?
Yes.
John Mysick?
Uh, I think I have to abstain, because I don't think I was there as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, they passed, thank you.
And then for the, uh, October, sorry, I'm being friendly to me this morning, uh, and then for the October eleventh, uh,
John, were, were you at the October eleventh meeting?
I was.
Oh, okay. My mind is gone, so yeah, okay.
Those I wasn't.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second it.
Linda Calafiore.
Yes.
Donna Jett.
Yes.
Ellen Martin.
Abstain was not there.
Judy Rofuero?
Yes.
John Mysick?
Yes.
Passed, thank you.
Great. Um, receive an act, after-action report for the pumpkin roll movie in the park and Halloween.
We've had a lot of activities since our last meeting. Um, this year, the pumpkin roll was held on Saturday, October the twenty-ninth, from two to four. Um, we closed down Ocean Avenue between Carpenter and Unibrow Streets for that. Um, during the pumpkin roll, we also had some activities in Devendorf Park, and that was the Carmel Host Lions helping kids decorate the free pumpkins we had placed there, um, with stickers. Um, and, uh, Rusty Croft, whom, uh, some of you may recognize that name, he's a local sculptor who's out of Carmel Valley. Um, he's very, uh, skilled in sandcastle design and metallurgy and all different kinds of things. Um, and he has done, uh, pumpkin carving demonstrations for us before, and he was here again this year. Um, we had decorated the park in the morning, thank you to Donna and Linda. Um, and as we were moving back and forth between the venues, we found that, uh, some of the decorations were getting destroyed by over candied children, maybe, I'm not sure, but there was a lot of activity going on where, you know, spiders' legs were being pulled off, skeletons were being pulled apart, it was something I haven't experienced before, and the rest of the community activities staff and public work staff hadn't seen before, um. And so I'm not quite sure how to respond to it, I think I made note in my staff report of this being ironic because, uh, Carmel started a Halloween parade, if you go back into the old pine cones, to, uh, give children an outlet for their energies, so that they weren't soaping windows and shaving, creaming, businesses and toilet papering things, so we saw a little of that old Halloween spirit creep into the park that night, and it was a little hectic, um, as we were getting set up for the movie as well. Um, um, the, uh, for it, we partnered with the, to sponsor a movie with the Forest Theater Guild, um, and so they came to set up their screen and, um, get ready to do a screening of Hocus Pocus. However, um, their, uh, projector equipment wouldn't work, so this was just a technology failure. Um, everything else, the setup went pretty smoothly, they did a test of the screen in the morning to make sure everything was positioned correctly. Um, unfortunately, it just wouldn't work, and so we had to call it just a little after seven. Um, I think everybody who was in the park, who was, um, uh, we saw a lot of people having, you know, takeout from Vesuvio and nearby restaurants, going over to Bruno's, so um, it ended up, I think, hopefully benefiting that, um, businesses, um, for people's, uh, evening picnics in the park, there were a lot of families there, it was pretty packed. Um, and so I'd like to explore doing something similar again. Um, and working with the Forest Theater Guild to see, um, how we would do that. Um, in terms of the areas for improvement, um, we need better detour signs, um, we did have signs that went up. Um, we tried to put them in as many places as possible, but there's always room for improvement with signage, um, and so we're gonna work on that for next year. Um, I might do fewer decorations in Devendorf Park, um, especially the larger ones. Last year when we put the, we, we had borrowed them from a um, a couple who were here and have since relocated, they lent us some of their giant decorations, and we only put them out a couple days before Halloween. Um, so we'll keep toggling and, um, figuring out how we do decor, decorations for next year. Um, the, we may, I, I think we might consider eliminating activities in Devendorf Park um, and just focus on the pumpkin roll. Um, also happening on the twenty-ninth was the Dog, um, Halloween costume parade in, in Carmel Plaza, and in one of these after actions, I think, oh, it's the, the draft of the twenty twenty-three special events, I'm gonna say this now and I'll say it again later. I would like to sit down with, um, our other community groups to talk through, um, probably at the start of the year in January, as we work on developing our calendars for the year, especially for bigger types of events that we're doing. Um, large fundraisers, you know, maybe not so much the, the smaller lecture types of programs, but see if we can find some sort of balance and consensus between our calendars. We don't wanna be in competition with each other. And if it happens that we are doing things the same day, for instance, like Homecrafters, where we partner with the Women's Club and with Church of the Way Fair, and we do shared advertising, or, um, the holiday tree lighting and menorah lighting, where we've partnered in the past with Sunset Center and Carmel Plaza on shared advertising and, you know, timing of events, I'd like to explore those opportunities to kind of recalibrate, so I'll be reaching out to Sunset Center and the Youth Center and all of those different groups to see if we can pull something together, at least do some calendar sharing, so that if it's early enough in the year, we can do some shifting around to accommodate each other, or explore how we partner together, um, going forward. Um, and then, um, potentially, if we keep, if we end up keeping activities in Devendorf Park, um, maybe having additional VIPs there too, those are our volunteer, um, patrol, um, people who are, you see the white shirts at, uh, our events, and you'll see them walking through town. Um, having them to, uh, be stationed in the park for the whole day, not just doing the circulation, ki- kind of like we were, which was circulating through and checking in on things, so, um, that's potentially one option for that. Um, for the Halloween Birthday Parade, um, that was held Monday, October thirty-first. Um, we switched to having our parade on the, you'll remember the actual Halloween Day. Um, and that happened last year, we had to shift, um, what we were doing, um, away from Sunset Center, because the Bach Festival had been moved as a result of the pandemic shifting, I mean, just the pandemic repercussions keep going. Um, we staged on, uh, the drivers on Unibrow between Fifth and Ocean Avenue, and then we had the walkers staged in the footprint of the farmer's market. Um, this was similar to how we had things set up for the homecoming parade, if you, uh, attended that. Um, this works much better than having the staging done on Mountain View, if you'll recall, because it shuts down that whole big intersection, traffic control gets a little hairy, and so this allowed us to keep everything contained downtown and loop back around nicely to the park. Um, the, um, the change back to, um, actual Halloween two was, um, is, is an experiment, continuing experiment, to see if we can increase participation in the parade. Um, pre-pandemic, we were seeing, uh, fewer groups that were participating in the parade, um, and also attending the parade to, to view it, so we're hoping that, um, we can continue, and I, we have, I think we have been seeing the last two years, especially this year, more, um, youth groups there participating alongside of our, um, standard community groups, the CRA, so we had the Carmel High School Cheerleaders and other youth groups, and that was really um, great to see, and we had candy and trick-or-treating in Devendorf Park. Um, I'd like to, there's always room for improvement, we did some outreach to Business District, um, about trick-or-treating, um, and so I think we'll work on how we can do that better next year, so that businesses can participate. I know that Pacific Grove saw thousands of people on the Saturday before Halloween downtown in the Business District trick-or-treating, and I think that we, we don't need to get to that level on Halloween, but um, it could continue that kind of festive air as families get ready to head out for the most serious trick-or-treating in Mission Fields. Um, and then look at pushing the parade start time to four thirty. Um, we found that the kids who take the bus get here a little bit later, we found that from the CYC, so that was good beta for us, and the, um, I understand that the schools are talking about a later start um, time, and that will impact this as well, so we just need to make sure that we're keeping tabs on what the school district is doing and make sure we're communicating with them, so that we can do this, because again, the parade used to be held on Halloween, um, after school, so that the kids could come in and participate in their costumes and, um, and do that on actual Halloween Day before they went to, um, off to trick-or-treating. Um, and that is what I have for our after-action, so overall, I would say everything went pretty well. Um, pumpkin roll's pretty dialed in at this point, besides some unexpected hijinks in the park. Um, and the, um, equipment failure for the movie, pretty fun day if you were out and about, um, on that Saturday, the twenty-ninth, and the same for our Halloween parade. I think it was a great parade, it was, we saw good participation, um, very fun, very festive, and it's, it's really nice to see, we, we have a lot of new families here in town, I'm seeing them come into the library, I'm seeing them at our events. Um, I think it's, it's really great, and we're definitely, um, seeing participation, um, and attendance by, by our new families, so. That's what I have for after-action.
I mean, first, congratulations and thank you, I mean, to Ashley, Leslie, Margie, I mean, what you and your team and the city uh, did to pull off all of these events in a short amount of time with as much legwork that, that, you know, that goes into them and setup and, and takedown. Um, it was fantastic, I mean, I, I flew home from the East Coast Saturday morning to try to get there for the pumpkin, uh, roll, and what was so fun was how many people were taking responsibility for it happening, and I was like, uh, okay, whatever, whoever's taking responsibility, that means you're bought in and you're excited, and it, and I, I heard so many people saying, yeah, I was part of it, and I'm like, that's great, because this is such a cool way for the community to come together, there were so many, I mean, parents were rolling just as many pumpkins as kids and grandparents and grandkids, so I thought that was pretty amazing. Um, and then I, I also think on that Monday parade, you know, with the kids being dressed up at school, it was so easy for them just to roll straight to that parade, and then I know that, you know, it was really funny, after the pumpkin, after the parade, uh, we went to dinner at a local restaurant, and I remember seeing a witch sitting at the bar by herself, uh, ordering a glass of Chardonnay, and then I saw Donna come in and sit next to her, and in her, and like, you had all these people dressed up at a bar, it would have been a great picture, um, but it was, you know, definitely it was supporting the community after that parade downtown. So, thank you and, and congratulations. Donna?
Yeah, I, I said, I, it seemed to me there were more on the street watching the parade, and it looked like our crowd was bigger and bigger, and, um, and I, and I think you're right, we need to get outreach to more groups to join in to the parade, but there were so many people on the street, I was like, because I was riding with Judy and Linda, as you know, in the convertible, and you're up and you can see both sides. So it was an impressive crowd, and thank you, because I know uh, the, the ornaments, I mean, the decorations, we worked on that a lot, then we took them down, and, uh, Margie and Leslie and Ashley were amazing what they did that week. I, Friday night, I went to see the, the Beatles documentary at the Forest Theater, and it was crowded, I mean, they were almost full. That was going on, and Sunset was going on, and the, the park was going on, so we were a very vibrant community that weekend.
Great. Uh, next, after-action, or I guess any public comments on that? Sorry. Okay, receive an after-action on third Thursday and an update on the farmer's market and discuss.
All right. So, the, uh, farmer's market. Third Thursday, we had, um, three events. Uh, one in July. August, we tried to pull it together, but with the Car Week in the way, um, we decided not to move forward with that, um, September, and then we had the last one here in October, and the last one in October, I feel really hit its stride, if you were able to attend any of them. Um, you know, it started out kind of quiet. The audience for this, I wasn't sure, you know, we've talked in the past about street dance um, and alcohol combined with that, and, you know, those types of events, and those events, of course, um, are more targeted towards adults. Um, and in my head, I kind of had this, especially as it had been laid out in the past as a foodie type of event and something along the lines of street dance, but what ended up happening was um, Good Roots Inc., our, uh, market managers had experience with these events and, uh, foresaw something I didn't see, which was that this would be very popular with, um, our families here in town. They had, uh, great activities for kids to do, art projects, um, cornhole, um, all kinds of games in addition to having, um, food, and, uh, later on, we tried out, um, alcohol at the September and the October meetings. Um, they were also testing out what kind of music would be popular with, at this event, so we had some kind of folksy kind of music, some more rock music. Um, I think something more lively was, um, Better Received, the last one for October with the Harvest Festival theme, um, really hit its stride, I think, and, um, and they had a great band, they were the Transducers, I think, anyway, Sunset Center sponsored this stage, and so they're looking for different ways to uh, partner with, uh, Sunset, Carmel Youth Center was there, um, in September and October, um, doing the, um, alcohol component and, and using the proceeds as fundraising opportunity for them. Uh, we did play around with the size of our little, um, wine garden, wine slash beer garden. And, um, I think smaller is better, the, the focus of the event is more about the music and the camaraderie. Um, families are, you know, getting food there, but also as we saw with the movie night, they're, you know, going to local restaurants and getting takeout, they're just enjoying the music, it's a way for the kids to be able to play in the park, and for the adults to enjoy, um, music and food together while their kids have fun, and so I think all of the events went well, but October in particular, um, was, um, what I think that event can continue to be as we go forward, it really was a festive time in the park, we did move the timing back from um, five to eight to four to seven because of the the light change, so we'll play around with whether or not we wanna keep that standard across the board as we go forward. I would like to also take an after-action report to the council, they, as they've requested December or January to talk about this. Um, I'd like to see a series of them, uh, starting in April or May and running through October, just as we did this year. Um, no earlier than April, because the weather is less predictable in February, March, and it's still kind of chilly, so. Um, and then, of course, not during August, Car Week is, Car Week is its own whole own thing, it's almost a car month, where with the prep for it and all the bandwidth that that takes, and so I wouldn't, even if I know there are some, uh, years where it seems like Car Week falls that almost the first week of August or the second week of August, I still wouldn't even try to, to fit that in, I'd let, I'd let August be its, its own month of, of car stuff, and, you know, families are getting back to school and traveling, so I think a return in September, October is just fine, and it's great, you know, the, with it being Thursday, we're not competing with um, the Carmel Plaza Concert Series on Fridays, so people can still attend to that. Um, and that is a completely, you know, different vibe than, than what Third Thursday, um, has become, and so I, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with our market manager, um, to give the after-action report to the city council, um, and to, um, bring something back to you early in the spring to discuss and layout, you know, what our plans are, what potential themes are, um, what we're thinking about for this new series, should we, um, continue to move forward with it. And I did see some of you, um, there, was, that was great, and I also saw some of our council members and the mayor attending, so that's helpful for us as we do these after-actions, because you've seen it with your own eyes and participated and, um, have a, a visual on what, what those things look like.
Little question. Uh, is the concourse coming back to the park? I hope so, because that was, uh, the most important vibe we've ever had. And I don't know if that's something that the city's working on to encourage them to return.
We can, uh, discuss that when we get to the twenty twenty-three special events list.
Linda?
Well, I did go to the October, uh, third Thursday, and, um, it was really enjoyable. Um, I had plans to go out to a restaurant, not knowing that, uh, stationery was providing hamburgers, which I thought was, was fantastic. Um, I don't know if they're willing to do that, or if they're, if you're gonna rotate that, but I, I thought the convenience of having uh, someone run to their restaurant and, and prepare on-the-spot food to bring it back was a great idea. So, we had fun, and I bought some things.
Very good.
Any comments from the public? All right. Uh, next, uh, receive a draft of the twenty twenty-three special events calendar for the city of Carmel by the seat of the guests.
All right, so you have our, um, meeting calendar um, for twenty twenty-three. Um, we have, um, plugged in our usual suspects events, so items that, um, occur on the regular, um, that we know when the dates are, some things are variable, like for instance, the Sandcastle Contest is contingent on, um, the AIA schedule, um, the tides. And, um, we also look at, we usually hold that event in September, and so we are cognizant of, especially with our architects, um, the Carmel Heritage Society Home Tour, so we're not scheduling those things for the same weekend, so we will have later in the spring a firm date for the Sandcastle Contest. Um, Surf About, they're also contingent on looking at tides and weather in June, so they'll have a firmer date for us. Um, I anticipate we'll have more of those, you can, this at least gives us a sense of what's happening month by month. Um, and as for some of our outside organizers, um, who are still in the process of setting those dates, we'll get those firmed up and plugged in um, as soon as we can, um, and as I mentioned during the after-action for the pumpkin roll in the movie in the park, um, I would like to reach out to all of our community groups and just see if we can see where we can partner, um, but avoid some of the key scheduling conflicts, if we know one of our community partners is doing a big fundraising event, we won't schedule something for that, we'll figure out a different time or a way to to work around that. Um, I also did include, um, the third Thursdays tentatively to be determined um, as we go forward and work on that, um, into the winter and into the spring, um, but just so that we had an idea of what our calendar is starting to look like, um, just with this, this annual types of large events that come through, and then events that run through the city's um, permitting, uh, process and our organization process. Um, so I think we're, we're off to a, a good start so far. Um, at this point, I wouldn't, um, I wouldn't add anything else in, in terms of city-led events. Um, we did test out, uh, this September, uh, you had the after-action for our community organization, kind of community group fair to encourage, um, volunteerism. Um, I'd like to bring that back probably one more round this spring, but I don't know if we'll do it in the fall, when that turns into our very busy season with the, um, with all of the big, big special events. Um, but I think, I, like I say, I think we're off to a good start in terms of, uh, where we are with our, our calendar and what we're looking at in terms of events for twenty twenty-three.
Did we get a list in the packet of all the events proposed?
There should have been, but Leslie just sent a message that for some reason it didn't get attached, so she'll send it out to all of you, take a look at it. No big surprises, like I said, it's, some of the dates are still be, to be determined, um, and those are mostly ocean-dependent ones at this point.
Well, for, for information, July fourth, uh, the next day, the, uh, Women's US Open opens uh, on the fifth, it starts, so July fourth, prior to that day, and the, and many of the hotels, you know, have a minimum, and that event starts, and it's going to be big. It's going to be a very, very large, I don't think as big as AT&T or the Men's US Open, but the town will, we have a lot of people in it because of that open, because they come a day or two early and stay, so I mean, I don't know that there's anything we need to know, but the park may be busier than usual.
I think it will be, and we try to plan accordingly regardless of where Fourth of July falls, to have, you know, extra facilities down at the beach and trash containers, because we see, you know, it's, it's a very Fourth of July summertime thing to spend it um, at the beach or Beachside Village, and so that is good, um, information, Donna, thank you, because we may want to explore, um, shutting more areas down around the park um, to accommodate extra space, I know we had previously talked to Monterey County Pops about shifting um, where they sit, so that there's more where they sit so that there's more space for them. We kept it the same last year and it worked, it worked just fine, but knowing that we're gonna, we may have larger crowds, we may have to to change that up a little bit this year. So thank you.
Any any public comments? Okay. Consideration of the adoption of a meeting calendar for 2023.
So every year, we take a look at our upcoming meeting dates for the Community Activities Commission and adopt those. Those are actually included and attached for 2023. If there are any changes anybody would like to propose, this would be the time to do it. We can also amend the calendar if if something comes up that we can't foresee in the future to make sure that we keep on track with our meetings. But this is second Tuesday of the month, nine thirty a.m. all the way through the year. So we'll leave it to all of you to discuss.
Anyone have any? Any thoughts?
I I just go back to years ago. We didn't have a meeting in August or December. Those are sort of canceled pre, but I don't think we were doing as many things as we are now. So that, you know, just to cut down, if we meet in person, just to cut down on activity. But I'm fine with it the way it is.
The only, the only date, the April 11th falls on the spring break for Carmel Unified School District, I believe. Be the only thing. So I don't know if we're going to be in town or not, but that's just one heads up. I don't, I don't know if it necessitates us moving it, but just more of it.
Yeah, we're looking for, I mean, any conflicts that we couldn't see. Sometimes just the way the calendar works out, that second Tuesday can be really close to Fourth of July, or it can be during Car Week. It just depends on how things shake out. This 2023, I think we've avoided any conflicts. And unless the group wants to do something, as Donna has proposed in the last year, where we don't have meetings in during Car Week or December, December after the tree lighting should be pretty quiet while we start to wrap our heads around the next year and event planning. So we might have not quite as much of an agenda then. But I'll leave it to the group to decide.
So Ashley, you said, when Donna asked about the concourse, you said we discuss it at this point. Is, do you know?
Yes, so the so I actually just spoke with Jeannie Friedman yesterday, and I I think I mentioned at the council meeting last week, if you guys turned in for the Car Week After Action Report that Chief Ward gave. Still in conversation with our concourse on the Avenue Event Organizer. So we're still talking through possibilities for next year. Whether that's, you know, partnering with somebody else to help execute the event. So we're still, we're still working on that. I know there is a lot of conversation around town. I'm hearing from different people of groups being interested, individuals being interested in some putting on their own event, whether it's in the place of Coda or not. If you hear anything, please send them my way so that I can speak with them about what what all of this entails, because I think that it is event planning is gnarly, but Car Week in particular, especially as Donna mentioned, you know, kind of the standard that's been set with Pebble Beach and with Concorde on the Avenue. That's just an added layer of complication. There's a difference between Concorde on the Avenue with the you know, they've got a judging pavilion and, you know, all different kinds of things going on and cars moving throughout the day, the announcements and Star Spangled Banner and everything that they have. All those details are a lot different than something you might see that sets up that's, you know, cars and coffee in the morning for a few hours, which might be a little simple, simpler to do. So if you hear of anybody that is interested in putting on a car show, please send them my way so I can at least get them started thinking about what that permitting process looks like and all of the the things that the city requires on our side, not even, you know, how they're doing things on on the the other, the flip side, what what their details are, but what just at the base level, what would be required by the city. I think that's really important for event organizers to have a good understanding of. And then also I announced at the council meeting that the concourse or the tour de elegance will likely not be coming through Carmel next year. I spoke with them. Partly, this is a safety thing, you know, Ocean Avenue to go down and make that turn at the bottom of the hill at Del Mar to go back into Pebble Beach is, that's a steep hill. And so the way that they have reorganized the tour is working better for them logistically, which as somebody that puts together events, I fully support and respect. But I did let them know that we're interested in hosting any other events that they may have they can think of, and we're going to continue to keep those lines of conversation open. So that's where we are at this moment.
Great. Any comments? All right. So just going back to, do we need to vote on?
Yeah, vote to adopt the calendar, yes.
I make a motion to adopt the calendar.
The calendar for meetings?
Yes.
Right. Our 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 calendar, yes.
So Donna, you seconded?
No, Ellen did.
Linda Calafiore.
Yes.
Donna Jett.
Yes.
Ellen Martin.
Yes.
Judy Raffo.
Yes.
John Masek.
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
All right. Consider if and when to return to in-person Community Activities Commission meetings and provide direction to staff.
So this has been a standing item on our agenda since earlier this spring, when COVID restrictions started to relax in different sectors of our community. The city council began holding the in-person hybrid meetings in March of earlier this year. And the boards and commissions have been empowered to determine how and when they would like to return to, whether or not to return to in-person meetings or to just stick with virtual meetings only. Every time we've discussed this, because of the restrictions at City Hall with regards to city meetings, and that is that everybody is required to wear a mask regardless of vaccine status. We have remained on Zoom. We are not the only commission that's remained on Zoom as a matter of well, partly convenience, but also for wanting to be able to see each other's faces as we have these meetings and interact in that way. At the last council meeting, the council considered a new urgency ordinance to replace those rules regarding masking to update them for that included guidance from the California Department of Public Health. And this was adopted at their last meeting, the November 1st council meeting. What this change means is that the mask wearing, rather than being blanket across the board, is now tied in with where we are in terms of transmission levels, whether they're high, low, or medium. If they are low, we can all be at the city council meeting and we will not need to wear our masks when in the council chamber. However, if our, if the, at the time of the publication of the agenda, if the transmission rate is medium or high, we will need to wear masks when we are at that meeting. The Monterey County Department of Health puts out these transmission rates every Thursday, which is great because that times out with when we generally release our agenda packets. So we'll have that information that would be included on the agenda going forward. This all being said, the Community Activities Commission could decide to to stay with Zoom only, rather than move to hybrid back in the council chamber. Hybrid's always going to be a way of life for us going forward. So for instance, if I know, and I and I appreciate those of you who do travel and and tune in for the meetings, you would still be able to do that if we were in person. That's still definitely a possibility. So so I will leave it to the commission to discuss. There, there are some options. Let me give you some options for discussion. So one, we know, we know with the the we can continue to have this as a standing agenda item and discuss it and say, we're still not quite sure yet. We know we're going into a gnarly flu season in addition to COVID. You know, it's getting into those winter months. And we could wait to rediscover this at the start of the new year in, say, January. You can decide for the December meeting that we want to try the hybrid and see what our, we'll just have to wait and see what the transmission rate is when we put together the agenda packet. Decide to stay strictly Zoom, Judy.
Can we toggle back and forth? So like if it's on Thursday and the transmission rate is high, we say, all right, on Tuesday, we'll have the meeting on Zoom. But if the transmission rate is low and we don't have to and wear masks, and we'll say, well, can we do that?
I don't see any reason why we can't, but just from a consistency for the public standpoint, I think it would be good to make a decision one way or another. And again, we could wait until you know, the worst of cold flu season, which is aside from COVID is over, and we say, okay, we're going to set this goal of returning to in-person meetings and or hybrid meetings in February or March and let the worst of that pass. We could toggle, though. Yes, Judy.
I mean, that and that could be a consistency. I mean, everybody knows that if it's, if it's high, we'll be on Zoom. If it's maskless, we'll be in in chamber, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
I have a question. In order to get, go into City Hall, do they have to approve vaccination? Or just wear a mask?
If the transmission rate is high or medium, at this point, it's just wear a mask.
Okay, so we don't know if they're vaccinated or not, or, you know. Okay.
No, we have forms that we ask the public to fill out when they come into our facilities and it's on the honor system, whether or not. So right now, if you just come into a city facility, like the library, for instance, we have a form there that says, have you, are you up to date on your vaccinations? It's the honor system. We're not checking this. If you are, then no mask wearing, and if you aren't, then you should, you should wear a mask. That's the recommend, that's how we're operating at this point. So.
Ellen?
A couple things. So if you know on Thursday, then that's within your seventy-two hour period when you post. So that's good. For consistency, I think it would be great to just do hybrid and look in January at where, you know, we want to go, getting through that flu season and everything else that's circulating. That's just my suggestion.
Yeah.
Donna?
I I think that till January or that we should just stay on Zoom. And then instead of just having one person go to City Hall and four of us at home are traveling, I think for consistency, we should stay on Zoom until we get closer to the hybrid system. And this, what city, what the council is doing. They're doing, I guess, hybrid now for city council meetings. But I, like I said, I hate to go, one of us go and sit there by themselves and nobody else is there. So I think Zoom at least till December or January, but I would do whatever the group decides.
Linda?
Yeah, I would be looking forward to meeting in person, but I would feel ridiculous being there by myself.
I'd be there with you.
So, yeah, I would encourage that we go to in person, but you know, I'm not adamant about it. And I think if we started January or February as a goal, I would be happy with that.
We could just share our love on Valentine's Day and make February 4th.
Oh, maybe, yes.
First of, I guess we could say, look, you know, that gets us through December and January of kind of the high efficacy and high, high or high transmission period. And maybe we we look at voting on, you know, you know, everybody can make their own decision, obviously, but we would look to make our first in-person hybrid meeting on February fourteenth, as long as transmission rates were allowed for maskless gathering.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I second.
Linda Cal, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just suggest one more time. So we are voting to hold our first in-person hybrid meeting, because obviously somebody has a potential if they're traveling or whatnot, but our first in-person hybrid meeting to be the the February fourteenth meeting date. As long as on that previous Thursday, we've been given the green light based on the county's transmission rates to go back as maskless.
And they would need to be low at that point in February for us to be maskless. So yes, that will be.
I just wanted to confirm, yeah.
But can we put in something in there that we want to toggle or or not?
I mean, we, I think, I think what we can do is this, I'm going to keep this on our agenda for December and January. And let's talk about what the transmission rates are looking like. I think that at some point, we need to pick one thing or the other. It's either Zoom or hybrid, because as Linda pointed out, we don't want one commissioner sitting at the dais by themselves. And when we talk about these meetings being hybrid, if we are going to be hybrid, then the expectation is that barring some, you know, unforeseen circumstance, or if you really know you're traveling and something can't be moved, all of you would be there in person, whether it's maskless or wearing your mask. That's what we're committing to with hybrid, so that and that's what I'm talking about with consistence, that kind of consistency. So we would all be there together in our masks or not in our masks going forward, once we make that decision.
But I kind of thought we, our our original thing was we didn't want to wear masks. We'd be back as long as we didn't have to wear masks. Am I wrong? Is that, isn't that what we, why we didn't?
That, you're not wrong, and that's where we are, but I
Yeah.
We're, we're going to be at the mercy of COVID for a while longer. So we we can do the toggle thing. I just think that that for consistency for the public, knowing that we are like the council and that we're in person now and that's where we are, whatever, at whatever date we decide that would be better.
Okay, because we, we, we didn't want to be like the, because the council's been in chambers with masks. Right? I mean, we could have done that.
We could have.
Not to. So I'm just trying to see why the point, you know, why, why now it's going to, why, well, now we're willing to do that.
Well, we can just, I mean, we can put it in our, we can put it in our in our vote to say on any meeting occasion, if the transmission rates are higher than allow for in-person unmasked meeting, we, it becomes a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Exactly. I I'm going to withdraw my motion because I think we stated it. I mean, I still have the same sentiments about it, but I think, John, you're reframing it more concisely. So please, yeah.
So, so we are going to make a motion to plan to go back to in-person hybrid as of February fourteenth, as long as transmission levels that previous week are low, which allow for in-person maskless meetings. And going forward, at that meeting or going forward, if the transmission levels are medium or high, the meeting would be held as a Zoom meeting for that session.
I can second that.
I think I got the gist of it. Linda Calafiore.
Yes.
Donna Jett.
Yes.
Ellen Martin.
Yes.
Judy Raffo.
Yes.
John Masek.
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
All right. Future agenda items.
For future agenda items, we'll have a we will have the holiday tree lighting and menorah lighting after action. And also we should have the after action for home crafters as well.
Oh, yeah.
Donna?
Anything we should know about home crafters? And do you need help decorating? And do you need help decorating the park or anything for the tree lighting? Because we won't have another meeting before either event, so.
We'll send out emails with dates for decorating. Thank you for asking about that. We already took down the, we had a plan to get the Halloween decorations and lights down almost immediately after Halloween. And you may have seen that some of the holiday lights are going up on the mediums. Those are the most challenging, so we're starting there. And then we've been ordering more lights and doing some testing for the park replacement lights of things that we have that have aged out. And then some additional lighting that I think will look really nice. So if you're available to help us get those decorations up on top, once the lights get put up, that'll be closer to, wow, we're almost at mid-month, but mid-month, closer to Thanksgiving.
Judy?
I, I just wanted to say, I, I did, I, I hadn't seen them, but it was brought to my attention that the lights were already up. And I don't know if you guys have gotten any complaints, but I was getting complaints that they shouldn't have been put up until right after Thanksgiving, I don't know.
Yeah, that, we're not turning them on, we won't turn them on. But part of our challenge is that we are working with the Public Works Department, who has other things to do than put up lights. I see a lot of the tickets that they get, I put in tickets for them. And so.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we just want to get a jump on them and get them up as quickly as possible, because that week after Thanksgiving is the week of the holiday tree lighting. And we have done it in the past where we've done it kind of last minute like that, and it is stressful. We don't have the way to get replacement things if we need to get them, because we haven't, but have been able to test stuff, so. I'll, I'll keep an ear out for those complaints as well, but that's the logic is we're not going to turn anything on absolutely until after Thanksgiving. We just want to have them up and in place to the extent that we can.
Okay, I, because I thought Dale's group had helped us out last year and put up the lights, but maybe I'm wrong.
It was, we had public works. Yeah, working on that, so they'll, they'll slow go up as we, as we roll along. But again, we're not going to turn anything on until, until after that Thanksgiving week as we start to prepare for the, the tree lighting.
Okay.
And then are, are we still having a TBA winter, Winter Wonderland gathering?
I am contemplating that still. There are some potentials for that. I've been fielding some questions from other jurisdictions about it and thinking about the after action we did last, last year.
Gotcha, great. I'm a strong proponent.
Yeah.
Anything else, anybody, any other, any other comments?
No, I just have an announcement. There's a free event at Carmel High School on November the 20th. And it's 11 faith-based groups that sponsor Joining Hands. The one is, is of course our wonderful Jewish group. And it's free from two to four. And it's sort of a, it's called a gratitude. And it's sort of to acknowledge the community and all the groups. And then after that, it has free pie and coffee. We have pies coming from Jeffries, not, you know, we wanted to buy local. So at 2 o'clock at the high school, in their wonderful auditorium, 2 o'clock. And you may see it advertised. So if you're in the area, stop by, thanks.
Last, I have one more thing.
Linda? Judy? Yeah.
Go out and vote if you didn't vote already, and then stay tuned tonight to see who our new city council is.
Yep. Good stuff.
And then one more last shout out, Veterans Day Ceremony in the park with American Legion Post 512.
Great.
John, I have one, I, John, I have one thing. Sorry, I missed the public comment at the beginning. So I'm related to the Veterans Park. I'm going to go out to the, my storage area this, this morning or this afternoon and pick up the flags. And Janie and company are going to put them around the park to get ready for the event on Friday, just so you know. And, and I'd also like to point out that we, we haven't had much luck with high school students volunteering previously, I think mostly because of COVID. But this last weekend, we had 10 of the Interact Club kids from Carmel High School, along with Bruce Denny came out. And we split five on the boardwalk at the north part of the, the dunes area, and then five into the Del Mar parking lot. And we also had about eight to 10 of Janice's and Shirley's crew there. And we cleaned all the, the, what do you call them, bear trap? Trash cans, which I don't think had ever been cleaned. It was quite a project and we cleaned up the whole parking lot and we cleaned up the North Dunes Boardwalk. And it was a big success and hopefully they're going to come back and take part in it. So it's nice to see them coming out and, and thanks to the Rotary Club for helping to arrange that.
All right, good seeing everybody, and I think with that, we'll adjourn.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye.